We're in a period of open forum and we've got time between either run out of cards that have been turned in or six o'clock. You've got four minutes to speak on any topic for the city council if you want to. I just want to share with you here that when you sign the card, you're agreeing not to make comments of personal nature regarding individual members of the council or staff, disruptive comments, and just ask you to abide by those. First one is Mr. Mike Kilmer.
Hey, everybody. Mike Kilmer, 28, 18 West Jackson Street. I'm here to talk about the playground in Brownsville that's in my neighborhood. I spoke with Norm Ross earlier this week, who's the Deputy Superintendent of Schools, and we spoke for about 10 minutes. He loves the idea of working with the city on some projects that can help the youth of the city and the county because something that we put together in the city can be a place that people from the county can go in and benefit from. One of the long-term things that myself and some of the other people in West Pensacola would love to see is another community center that could offer some music and some arts. I've personally done community music since about the mid to late eighties with poor kids, and it can be really beneficial for them. There's a lot of vocational opportunities for young people around here, but it's my feeling that if they don't have creative opportunities, then they have much less calling to learn a vocation which can earn them some money because they don't necessarily have a joyful reason to live for which to make money to sustain themselves. Norm has a sense that there's a disconnect between the council and the mayor's office, and he's upset that there seem to have been, as he put, well, what he's not interested in, as he put it, is clandestine meetings. He would love to work with the mayor's office and the council and the school board in seeing what kind of solutions can be come up with. In terms of opening up the playground behind Alianestra School, he thinks it'd probably be relatively easy for the city to lease the grounds from the school board, and for the city to take care of the liability, possibly it could be added to a citywide liability insurance plan that's already in place, and then the city could take care of maintaining the yard. So I was gonna suggest that possibly, unless you all have any alternate ideas, there could be a committee put together which would contain someone from the mayor's office, someone from the council, someone from the school board, and possibly some citizens, maybe some members of churches and youth organizations that could look at uniting the different elements that make up our city and county in working with some of the resources we have.
Thank you. Mr. Gary Sansing.
Jerry Sansing, 15, 17 East Jackson, citizen of the county. You know what? I like what Mike just said. It's about time the city, the school board, the county get together and solve problems. I mean, it's not as if people haven't reached out their hand to you all. And now, you'd be surprised how much you can get done doing it that way. Someone should've said, hey, let's follow up. I mean, you people, I know we got a half hour for this public forum, but you could've followed up on that. Hopefully, you will in the future. My issue is a little different. Well, it's consumer protection. One of my heroes in life has been Ralph Nader. Republicans turned me on to him back in '72. And over the so-called break for Christmas, we finally had one appointed on the national level. I would say since the nineties, we haven't had anyone representing consumers. I didn't go in, but I took one of our occupation Pensacola out to Walmart. I haven't been in there in years. I refuse to go into Walmart, Target, and any other place that sells things made in Communist China. I have, I better say that again, Communist China, you know? You don't know it, but there's probably over a quarter of a million civil disobedience acts in that country. I think we all might remember Tiananmen Square, but yet, what are you doing? Now the military is saying, there might be a threat there from these people. I think there might. And yet, we, it's like over in World War II, they said, well, we'll sell them the steel to build the cannons. Well, we're doing worse than that. We're selling our whole economy to them. Anyway, one more thing. When are you people gonna provide your staff? Your staff will be your consumer protection, like Ralph Nader, your attorney. How long is it gonna take? This is something please consider, because you know what? I'm gonna keep griping on that issue. You gotta have someone that you can turn to to get a different opinion from Ralph Nader to, what's his name? Pat Buchanan. Thank you. I watch them two debate and talk. Talk about books. Talk. So talk to the, I mean, to the school board. Talk to the county, and you'd be surprised what we can get accomplished if we do that. Thank you all, and I hope to reach out my hand to some of you all.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to inform Mr. Sansing and the public that I would venture to say that every store in the city of Pensacola or in Scamby County sells something made in China. So I was just gonna make sure that the public didn't think there was a store here in Pensacola, Florida that didn't sell something that wasn't made in China.
I know there are.
Sorry, I'm not trying to come to the defense of Target or Walmart, but every store sells something made in China. Thank you.
I wouldn't think so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You've had the minutes sent to your council. Are any deletions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Second. Bush is in second. Please vote.
Dr. Williams.
Needs pardon.
That approved unanimously. All right, we're awards and presentations. I'd like to invite Ms. Roxanne Baker to come down to the lectern. She's a specialist with the Department of Physical Education, Health Wellness, Driver Education, and Athletics for the Scamby County School District. And I'd also like to have Mr. Dave Flaherty join her if you would, please. She's gonna present, Mr. Flaherty, the Director of Neighborhood Services with the Florida Alliance for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, Dance, and Sport Community Service Award. This award recognizes the Neighborhood Services Department for their willingness to go above and beyond to support the Scamby County schools by providing facilities that promote being physically active for a lifetime, for a lifetime for students and employees. Ms. Baker.
I'm wearing a dual hat tonight. Not only am I the one that nominated this department because of all that they do with our school district, but I serve on the Board of Directors for the Alliance, and I'm past president, and so tonight I'm here to bring the trophy back to Pensacola, his award, and present it to you here at this meeting. Our organization each year gives an annual community service award, and we take it very seriously. And I'll have you note that the following was written, besides what the president just said just then, that the relationship forged between the Scamby County School District's physical education and athletic programs and the City of Pensacola Neighborhood Services Department is the type of positive collaboration that maximizes cross uses of resources and facilities that benefit the citizens of the city, especially the children. The model of city-school-system collaboration is part of what makes Pensacola a great city. And with that, I'd like to say congratulations and thanks for all that you do for our kids and all of our employees in the city of Pensacola and in Scamby County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate this. On behalf of the department, it's a pleasure to accept this. I just have to tell you, I mean, we couldn't have a better partner than the Scamby County School District. We work hand in hand in a number of areas, and this is just one of them, and thank you so much. And although I'm the Director of the department, I don't really do the work. I'm not the one who's out there in the partnerships with the staff in the back. Stand up, please, right there. That's some of them, that's not all of them, but that's some of them, and they're certainly the ones that make those partnerships work for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you. Just wanted to say hello to Roxanne. I didn't realize who she was until she started talking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I'd like to ask Mr. Asmar to take his place at the other lectern for the rest of the employee awards.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And as he is reading out the award, if you could just make your way around behind the chief of police and shake hands with the members of council, and on the way, I'll hand you your award certificate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. The next portion is the Employee Award of Excellence program. I'm asking Kenneth Everson, master mechanic, to come forward. Kenneth? Tonight, we are proud to announce that Kevin, Kenneth Everson, will receive the Employee Award of Excellence. This award was established by the mayor as part of his 20 solutions for 2011 campaign promises, which was to develop a cost-reduction incentive plan for city employees who find ways to cut their budget. Kenneth, if you'd just walk around here. Kenneth Everson, master mechanic of the sanitation services and fleet management department, is the recipient of the award for his resourcefulness and ability to fabricate a device with materials on hand for a hydraulic jack to be used for clutch installation. He saved the city the cost of the tool, the extended downtime while waiting for shipment, and most importantly, the potential for serious on-the-job injury. The amount of the city was able to save was between $815 and $1,600 based on quotes taken from local and national vendors. We are proud to award Kenneth Everson a check in the amount of $158 for his excellent cost-saving idea. Thank you, Kenneth.
Mr. President, honorable members of the commission, the Employee of the Month for January. In order to more strongly emphasize the city's commitment to outstanding performance, one employee is recognized as the Employee of the Month. Please recognize Kathy Condon, Marketing Coordinator for Neighborhood Services Department, as the Employee of the Month for January. Kathy?
We have a plaque associated, and as Kathy makes her rounds, for the audience, I will read what the plaque says. The plaque reads, "The City of Pensacola is proud to recognize Kathy Condon as Employee of the Month for January. Since starting full-time employment with the City of Pensacola in 2005, Kathy has proven to be a dedicated and hard-working employee. She comes to work, well, she comes to work, she comes to work with a positive attitude, continues to take on new projects in all facets of the department, and is always willing to go above and beyond the normal call of duty. As marketing coordinator for the Neighborhood Services Department, Kathy has far exceeded the expectations of her position. She has created new partnerships with various corporations, as well as maintained healthy relationships with existing partners. Through various partnerships and barter agreements that total over $100,000 annually, the city is able to receive advertising and promotions at a fraction of the cost. Because of her cheerful demeanor, excellent customer service skills, and willingness to help her fellow employees, we are proud to recognize Kathy as the January Employee of the Month. Congratulations."
Mr. Barker, this will be placed in the month hall of the city hall for the next year. Okay. Just go ahead and check your [inaudible]. Did Mr. Crenshaw, is he able to make it?
Mr. President, I don't believe he's, we're gonna push him off to next month if you don't mind.
We have the employee service pins.
Mr. President, council members, each month we have employees who reach milestones in their careers with the city. These milestones, which are observed at five-year intervals, are symbols of commitment, hard work, and dedication in serving the people of Pensacola. Employees are the city's most important asset. As part of the city's team, they individually and jointly seek ways to improve the quality and the efficiency of services to every citizen. Tonight, the city council and the citizens of Pensacola have the opportunity to publicly recognize and thank this special group of employees. As I call your names, will you please come forward to receive an award of the city's appreciation and be recognized by members of the city council and the community? At five years, Anne Marie Greer, Airport Operations Duty Manager, Pensacola International Airport, as Ms. Anne Marie Greer has gone from being an operational officer responsible for assisting with the day-to-day operational readiness of the facility to her current position as the operation duty manager. In this capacity, Ms. Greer supervises a staff of 22 individuals in five distinctly different functional elements, all of which are critical to the facility's ability to operate efficiently 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Additionally, Ms. Greer serves as the facility's primary airport security coordinator, ensuring compliance with the myriad of federally mandated security regulations and acting as liaison with outside federal agencies. Ms. Greer has proven herself to be a very capable manager, consistently demonstrating high degrees of professionalism, and is an integral valuable part of the airport management team. Congratulations. In addition to his invaluable assistance with finance and budget issues within the Public Works and Facility Departments, John has shown a dedication and a tenacity in taking on any task. He has been given the unofficial nickname SLJO, Superfluous Little Jobs Officer, due to his willingness to take on any assignments. John, congratulations on your fifth year anniversary.
That acronym stood for something a little bit different when I was in the military,
Lastly, Mr. President, council members, Stephen Ordanya, Police Lieutenant for the Police Department. Lieutenant Steve Ordanya is one of those employees who hit the ground running when he was hired by the Pensacola Police Department in February of 1987. He's celebrating his 25th year. Among his assignment have been Investigation, TAG, Vice Narcotics, SWAT, and Uniform Patrol, where he currently supervises the evening shift. As a supervisor, he is known for his fairness, his street knowledge, and his proactive approach to law enforcement. Congratulations, Lieutenant. Mr. President, that concludes the awards and presentations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Asmar. Just one more round of applause for all the employees. Are there any public hearings?
No, sir.
Was that judicial?
No, sir.
Mr. Asmar, mayor's report.
Mr. President, I'd like to recognize Mr. Barker to go over the financial monthly report for the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Asmar, Mr. President, and members of city council. This is the report for the January 2012. Our revenues in total continue to be down as it relates to our franchise fees and utility taxes, and they're down about 12% or a half a million dollars through the first four months of the fiscal year. The half-cent sales tax is down about 5.5% or $50,000, and our communication services tax is down by about $59,000, and all those are from budget, and municipal revenue sharing's about on target, little growth there of about $9,000 at 1.27%. And the total down is about $578,500, and all those currently can be offset by expenditure savings in the general fund budget. The local option sales tax is also down by $59,000 or 3.8%, and the local option gasoline tax is down about 6% or $25,000. Planning trust fund is $680,775 is their balance, and the part purchases trust fund is $38,041. As reported in the other months, Energy Services will not meet revenue this year. We're looking at their net to see how they will come out, and we'll continue to monitor And then an issue that was in the comprehensive annual financial report and one that I mentioned last month also deals with pensions, and it'll be a continuing issue as we move into the future and into the fiscal 13 budget, but the actuary reports, as I reported to city council on Monday for 9/31 were not approved by the boards at the request of the mayor so that the mayor's office would have time to sit down with the employees and the unions whose contracts all happened to expire in September of this year before moving forward on the actuary reports and have the boards approve those reports. Had those reports been approved, what they reflected was the city contribution for fiscal year 13, which is our next fiscal year, would increase by $2.6 million, and the unfunded actuary accrued liability would have increased $37.5 million. And then for the contracts, we have changed the format, and I also now have the reports for this fiscal year posted on the website under the monthly reports, so if council wants to review any parts of the report or the contracts, they're out there for your review. But Councilman Townsend asked last time about what process they went through, so the header for each of these that I've changed is formal bids first. Formal bids are RFQ, the Zimmerman Agency, and that's a three-year marketing advertising services contract, and it was, the first phase of that was for $82,500. And then contract renewals or extension was the SkyCon Incorporated, which has to do with the airport, and it's an extension of the maintenance contract for loading bridges, and it was $64,480. Continuing contact renewals and extensions, Sonny Callahan Associates, he's in aviation advisor services, and that was through direct negotiations, and that amount is $60,999. Tyler Technology is the annual maintenance support contract that we have for the software for our computer system in Form Gold, and it's $125,163. And then quotations or direct negotiations were Allen Enterprises dealing with replacement panels for the airport taxiway and bridge Bravo signage, and it was $25,681. Changing categories to state, federal, or other buying contracts, Chastain Enterprises for $1.3 million for the five CNG-powered garbage trucks. And then continuing with the state, federal, or other buying contracts, we have Wesco Turf Incorporated, and we purchased a mower for the golf course for $25,422. Then to remind council of the budget calendar, March 1st, we will be having public input meetings at 5:30 at Sanders Beach, Kerring Jones Community Resource Center, and then March 6th, the public input meetings at 9:00 a.m. in the morning at the Hickory Resource Center. June 11th, the council should receive the proposed budget is what we have scheduled, and then July 1st, we should receive certification of final value from the property appraiser. July 19th, the trim notices, and July 23rd to 25th are the normal workshops which are scheduled. September 5th is the first public hearing, and September 12th is the final public hearing.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have a question on several of the departments. I noticed the professional services line item, and it was, some of it, some of the departments were at 89% of budget. I'd like to find out who provides those services, if it's an ongoing contract, and why the amount is so high this early in the budget year.
Yes, ma'am. Just generally, a lot of the professional services contracts are encumbered, so you're talking about the online reports that you're viewing. Those are encumbered, they may not be expended, but when the contracts are out of that, we encumber the total dollar amount. So on some of these contracts that you see here, the total dollar amount has been encumbered, it may not be expended, so it's a subject of the time when the service is needed.
So as professional services, though, I understand allocated overhead from our, you know, the finance department and different, the attorney, that that goes to each department, but what is the professional services? What does that provide in a specific department?
Well, like, if you happen to look at the Financial Services Department, our professional services are probably one of the ones that look unusually high, and that is a carryover encumbrance that we had for the SBE study that we were doing. So that was carried over those dollars, so it automatically jumped us up. It's about a $200 and something thousand dollar contract, we carried over about 189 of that. So that would show that attorneys or another professional services, they aren't usually encumbered, but if you looked at the attorney's office, for example, the legal office, as you know, your city attorney is on contract, so we encumbered that whole contract upon approval or confirmation by the city council, so his line item probably looks unusually high also in that area. Now, the allocated overhead is in a different line item.
Right, that's totally different.
So it would not be there. Now, council line item may also look high. You have the auditors in there now, so we're finishing the report, so that could've made council look high.
It did, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerald.
Yes, I have one quick question for Mr. Barker. As it relates to DirecTV, where are we on the franchise agreement with DirecTV? Did we ever solve that problem?
I'm not aware of an issue with DirecTV.
Do we have a franchise agree with DirecTV?
Not to my knowledge. As I understand it, the communication services tax many years ago, when it was state legislation, that we do not have franchise fees with the satellites nor the Cox cable or that type of thing. There's not fees that we collect for that. That's all under the communication services tax. But I could stand to be corrected on that. It's been a while since I've looked at that area.
Well, when you mentioned that our franchise fees were down, I was wondering if we were collecting from all the people that perhaps might be responsible for participating in a franchise agreement with the city of Pensacola as they use utility poles, et cetera, and things around the city.
Right.
Can we find out what that, what the real, the true answer is, because I certainly wouldn't want to miss those funds if they're available to us.
Right, the the, all those type fees that you're speaking of as it relates to telecommunications, the phones, and that type of thing fall under the communication services tax, which the state has taken over for collection and remit funds to us. What we're specifically down in the franchise fee public service tax area is, of course, it's been a warmer-than-normal winter for both GovPower and ESP, and therefore our franchise fees collections are down.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Barker, there's two more people with lights on now, Ms. Myers, and then Dr. Wu.
Well, actually, I think I should maybe address my comments to Mr. Asmar. I mean, Mr. Barker did bring it up that there are two public, the mayor's going to have two public meetings on the budget, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
And one is at 5:30 on March the 1st, and the other one is at on March the 6th at 9:00 AM in the morning?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm disappointed that that meeting on March the 6th is in the morning. I think that that is going to ensure that some people who would like to attend are not going to be attending, especially people who work. So I would request that the mayor, you know, reconsider that time. I don't think it's a convenient time for a lot of people. And I'm just disappointed to know that it's at 9:00 AM in the morning rather than in the afternoon or evening.
I just wanted to clarify the email that was sent out about that. It was actually an attempt to accommodate all citizens' schedules having an evening meeting, and then also having a morning meeting for folks that could not attend the evening meeting. It wasn't necessarily a location for the east side or downtown or whatever, that the Vickery Center was for the folks that can't come at night, and I recalled that, the reasoning for the two different times.
Thank you, Ms. Dewis. Dr. Wu?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if y'all are following it or not, but there's a Senate Bill 1060 and a House Bill 809, which is talking about dramatic changes to the communication service taxes, and they're looking at probably a loss of 28.2 million to local communities. And what they're asking to do is, before anything is determined and stone, is for the Revenue Estimating Conference to take a look at what impact this is going to have on local government, because if they get to do what they're planning to do, it's really going to impact the city pretty dramatically. So I would encourage someone to look at both Senate Bill 1060 and House Bill 809.
We are, Councilman Wu, as a matter of fact, we have sent that information to our lobbyist and given them proper instructions on that.
Good, okay, thank you.
Okay, that looks like that's it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Council Communications. Ms. Dewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several items that I wanted to share with the citizens and also with council. Today I had the honor of attending the annual Navy League Military Recognition Day down at New World Landing, and it is where the Margaret Flowers Civic Award is given, and this started back in 1983, and it's to recognize and honor Navy or Marine Corps personnel that volunteer in our community, whether it's with the school district within the schools, or at religious organizations, or even here with our city volunteer coordinator within the city parks. And I wanted to congratulate, it's Kyle Musto, he is a Petty Officer First Class with Naval Aviation Schools Command, he's a naval air crewman, and he was the winner of the award this year. There were several nominees, actually almost two dozen, and they were all well-deserving for their commitment to our community. And I wanted to thank all of the Navy and Marine Corps personnel that help with our Parks and Recreation volunteer program. I think it's almost every weekend they're involved in something, whether it's at a community center or out in the parks. I know that I have been side by side with many Navy and Marine Corps personnel in the parks in my district, and they've made such a huge difference on scenic highway. And I just wanted to take time to recognize Petty Officer Musto and say thank you to all our servicemen and women. And then, secondly, the mayor's cleanup is coming to East Pensacola Heights. It's District 4 and District 3, essentially the bay is one border and the bayou is the other, going all the way to Firestone Boulevard and up to Summit. So this should have come in the mail to the citizens in that area so we can do some early spring cleaning. And then, thirdly, I'd also like to talk about something within East Pensacola Heights as well, and it is quite an investment that's being made. I know that some of us on council are frustrated at times with the lack of investment by other entities. The county in particular, I know Councilman Hall points out the taxes that are paid and that we are part of the county as well within the city boundaries. But I did want to congratulate and thank the the wisdom of the school district and their planning, some of the past things that they've done with the global school that they intentionally put in the downtown area to try to revitalize that area and make sure that it's not going to become a magnet school, that it will always have local access for the citizens that live nearby. So if kids want to go to that school, they have to move downtown. Cordova Park also, that's in District 4, but a lot of people that are in in my district as well attend Cordova Park, and there's a huge expansion that went on there. But there was a commitment made of 20 million to invest in AK Suter. AK Suter is actually on the National Registry of Historic Places. It's been there since the beginning of the 1900s, and quite an amazing school. We actually picked that school before we even picked a house. And 20 million is a huge investment. I mean, we have a bond that we have done as a council to build the Maritime Park across the street, and that's a huge investment. But I want to thank the school district and the partnership that we're all discussing that we need to forge. I think that that is a huge step forward in our community and their investment. And then my final thing that I'd like to share, I brought some artifacts for citizens, if you'd like to, after the meeting, come see, and there's actually some on display up in our council office. But part of the Gulf Coast Citizen Diplomacy Council, which is the Department of State Program, I'm proud to say that the whole world came to visit us this week. We had 19 people that came to study rule of law and judicial process, and a large portion of the visitors were from the Middle East. This that you see here, this tile is from Jerusalem, Morocco. There was, this was also given along with a brass plate that is on display in council chambers. The representative from Tunisia gave a gift to the city of a olive tree that is made from silver and, I believe, onyx. That's also up there for council and for the citizens to enjoy. But it was quite interesting to see the differences. Chief Simmons had actually sent Officer Worley to talk about law as well and the differences of people's lives, the risks that people take in some of the Middle Eastern countries just to stand up and speak for others, or try to establish a sense of community and run for governmental office. They're risking their lives in some of those countries. And we have quite a wonderful country here, and and it's very apparent when you realize discussing how laws are enforced and our death penalty even, that was some of the questions, that we have, you know, maybe a half dozen people in the state of Florida that would be executed in a year or sentenced to death. And the the judge from Iraq stated that in one week, 33 people are sentenced to death. So it's quite a different situation that they live in, and I'm proud, again, that we are one of 30 cities in the United States that have an opportunity to meet such wonderful international visitors. So please come up later on and take a look at all the artifacts, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. I I got an opportunity to host 14 people that were coming to study local politics. And I think my recollection is correct, they represented at least one from every every continent. So anyway, thank you, thank you for your interest in that. Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to, excuse me, let the public know and the council know that I'm sure you have heard me speak numerous times regarding the need for sidewalks on Lanier, Sanders Street for to provide a safe route to school for children who go to Workman &amp; Home Elementary School. And this week, the county has put in new sidewalks from Langley to Tony and from on Lanier, and from Lanier to Sanders on Tony, and from Sanders to to Lanier. And the reason those sidewalks have been installed is to provide a safe route to school for children. That's the primary reason. And there are a large number of children who live in the city limits on Sanders Street. There are some large apartment complexes there, and there are many families with children who live in the complex. I understand that the county county will be extending the sidewalk on Sanders all the way to Creighton Road. Now, one block of Sanders Street is in the city, and I understand that the city will be entering into ours, working out and in a local agreement with the the county to put the sidewalk in the one block that's in the city limits. This is, this is just incredible. I never really thought I would see the day when we would have sidewalks on Sanders Street and Lanier. And the route that the county has chosen is ideal to accommodate the large number of young people and residents who live in the city. The the primary beneficiaries of these sidewalks are going to be city residents. Sanders Street, while technically it is in the county, one side of Sanders Street is in the county, one side is in the city, you know, those crazy kind of boundaries we have over there. But the city residents are going to be huge beneficiaries of these sidewalks. And I just want to thank the county for installing the sidewalks. It is just tremendous. It's going to make walking to school a lot safer for children in both the city and the county. And I hope that we will continue to look for funding for Burgess Road, and I understand that the county will continue to look for funding to put sidewalks the rest of the way on Lanier from Tony to Creighton. So I just would invite you all to drive over there if you haven't seen those great sidewalks, and it's something we can all be be proud of, and I'm proud that the city and the county can can work together on these types of projects.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to announce that this week, we we broke ground on tennis courts at Armstrong Park, which is on A and Hernandez. As far as I know, these are the first tennis courts that ever been west of Palafok Street. And talking about coordination and collaboration with the county, I can thank Commissioner Marie Young for providing some assistance, financial assistance on this project. So we're looking forward to those folks who around the North Hill and on the West Side, that we will have tennis courts, a couple of tennis courts over there pretty soon, and I think it's at that park and add an enhancement to that park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and Vice President Townsend. I hope that the future Serena Williams or Andy Roddick come out of those tennis courts. That would be real exciting. Yeah, a couple of things I'd like to mention. Tomorrow at Bayview Park, there is going to be a building of oyster beds tomorrow from 9:30 to 12:30 AM tomorrow at Bayview Park. They're going to be constructing and placing oyster beds in our Bay to Har. This is a collaboration between Clean and Green, DEP, and the City of Pensacola. I would encourage all to come out, wear something that you don't mind getting wet, bring gloves, and those type of things, and I'd appreciate it if you'd come out. I plan on being there. The other issue is, Councilwoman Dewis has already touched on it, but we do have the mayor's neighborhood cleanup and EPA, EPH, and I wasn't going to talk about it, but I want to make it real clear for folks that need information that they can dial 311 when you have questions about maybe what's acceptable or what's not. You can also call the sanitation service at 435-1890 about what is appropriate to put out Saturday morning before 7:00 AM, and those type of questions. But EPH, District 4, Burnham Woods, District 3, Mallory Heights where I grew up, mentioned AK Suter, that neighborhood, which I actually went to school at AK Suter. So all those neighborhoods will participate in this mayor's cleanup on Saturday morning. And I believe that is it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. Tuesday evening on February 21, I attended, I will admit, my very first school district meeting, Escambia School District meeting. Councilman Gerald's was there as well. And as I shared with the the council members, I was allotted, and I behaved and spoke as fast as I could within my two-minute limit to just introduce myself as a citizen and also as an architect that has been involved in adaptive reuse and repurposing buildings, and let them, basically, I extended an invitation as a citizen for me to get involved, and basically, I used I used the word unification. I said, perhaps this is that we have an opportunity to unify. And to follow up on that, I have been invited by the superintendent to arrange an appointment with him. Board members appeared to be truly interested in the conversation, which the topic was the abandonment of schools, buildings, facilities, and properties within the city of Pensacola.
Thank you for that report, and thank you for going. Mr. Gerald's.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Spencer. That was an excellent segue into what I'm concerned about. And I heard comments earlier that there was support and understanding in the school board's decision to rebuild AK Suter in East Pensacola Heights and Ernest Ward up on the north end, close to the Alabama Line. And Ms. Dewis, you're absolutely right when you say that to rebuild a school in a community, it it's a spark in that community. It gives people, and you indicated you looked at the school before you considered your house. Well, I'm dissatisfied and disappointed in that over the years, every school in the black community, and particularly in District 3, have been shut down, boarded up, and abandoned. And that addresses the concern that Mr. Spencer is raising, because many of these schools are located in the city limits. My objective when speaking with the school board will be to rebuild some of those schools that have been eliminated and boarded up. And the message, it's my concern is really not to council, just to enlighten you as to how I see, and when we talk about disparities, and we sort of, as I will say over and over, we missed, we can't see the forest for the trees. But that's a blatant outright insult to tell us that you're going to replace schools when you boarded up all of the others, and we are trying to negotiate with them to say, well, what would you, what are you going to do with them? In my opinion, they could have rebuilt those schools, and we wouldn't be looking at the eyesore throughout our city. So this is a message not only to the school board, but to the citizens of the city of Pensacola. Let's watch and pay more attention to what's really going on. Because in the future, and we've just did some research and discovered that more than 76 percent of the African-American students in this Escambia County School District are... 76% of the African-American students in this Escambia County School District are riding buses. We're not replacing schools in our community. We're not putting that spark in those districts, because it has a future. Parents would like to know that their small children will be able to be educated in their neighborhoods, at schools that are in the neighborhood that they can walk to. But there are so many disparities, and some of you may or may not remember that when we approached the school board and others to participate with us in the disparity, or full disparity study, not just centering around procurement, but some of the other disparities that obviously exist. And to me, that announcement and that vote on Tuesday was just a slap in the face. And I guess that's why I'm up here, because I'm going to bring it up, whether it's city, county, school board, or whomever. Wrong is wrong, and you can't keep doing things by omission and pretending you're not doing something that's going to be harmful in the future. I know hanky panky when I see it. Known it for years. Used to get involved in it, but I know what it is. Thank you.
Mr. Gerald's, I agree with you with everything you had to say on, on that. And despite the state-of-the-art facility that the Global Learning Academy is over on the, the West Side, I haven't been there yet, but people that I know that have have really raved about it, urban planners that it was put in the absolute worst possible place for maintaining neighborhoods and building neighborhoods over on the West Side. And I just wish that the school board would stop operating in a vacuum, and I look forward to them working with the city. And I hope Mr. Ross and Superintendent, both are sincere in their promise to the city.
Okay.
I would find that hard to believe, but, you know, I'll give it a few minutes, but there's going to be a different attitude, there has to be. And my people are going to have to become more aware, more, more conscious, and more involved. I mean, you can't let people just keep steamrolling over you all your life, because I'm not in that bag.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Myers.
Yes, I just wanted to say that Councilman Gerald's, your remarks I agree with, and I found them to be very moving, and thank you for stating, stating them. And to Councilman Spencer, I would like to thank you for going down to the school board. It's amazing what you can get accomplished in two minutes. I normally don't go to school, school board minutes, meetings, but I went to my first school board meeting and spoke for two minutes about three years ago, and I basically told them that I had surveyed a lot of their facilities, and they were out of compliance with the ADA, and they were shocked to hear that. But the next day, I got a call from a very important person with the school district, and as a result of that two minutes, I helped them develop a survey, an ADA survey tool, and they surveyed all of their schools and have a plan to bring them up and are bringing them up to the ADA. So, you know, don't ever underestimate the value of, I definitely got my two cents' worth out of my two minutes when I, when I spoke, and I just want to thank you for, for going there and speaking up.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any, any petitions?
No, sir.
Bring this to the consent agenda. Item A is appointments, environmental advisory board. Item B is fiscal year 2011 comprehensive annual financial report. Item C was law enforcement trust fund purchases. D is open container ordinance revision. E, allocation of funding for Rogers Scott Tennis Court repairs. F, lifeguard ambulance, Inc., consent and estoppel agreement. G is external audit selection. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Committee of the whole report, resolution urging members of the Florida Legislature to support the adoption of Senate Bill 206. That City Council approval resolution urging members of the Florida Legislature to support the adoption of Senate Bill 206. That motion passed seven to one. Councilmember Johnson dissenting. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. The reason I voted against this Monday, I want to explain myself, was because I wanted the opportunity to speak to it separately from the consent agenda. I'll be happy to see this right guaranteed across the state, but I wanted our citizens to know that Pensacola City Council has long given citizens the right to speak at these meetings, going back many decades. And last year, we added additional opportunities for public input at the beginning of both our Monday and Thursday meetings. I also think it's important to point out that with rights come responsibilities, and we have a responsibility to elevate our public discourse. I hope that we can avoid personal attacks and vendettas and instead discuss the important and complex issues facing both the city and our citizens. Again, I will be supporting this tonight, and I hope the legislators pass the bill, but I want the citizens to know that the City Council has always supported and welcomed public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Myers.
Yes, I too would like to echo what Councilman Johnson said. I'm really proud of the city of Pensacola. This council does, I think, an extraordinary job of allowing citizen input, and it is in our rules and procedure, and the, what I like about this Senate bill, though, is that it ensures that citizens have the right to have input and, and not a privilege. We, as a council, do not have to have a public forum, our, our input, according to some recent decisions of our courts. So this, this law will guarantee that, that citizens have the right to speak at certain forums and throughout the state of Florida. So the city does exceed the opportunities that are going to be afforded under this bill, but this bill does, will ensure that it's a right and not just a privilege. So I'm, I'm going to support it, and I'm glad to see that my fellow councilman, Mr. Johnson, is supporting it.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other lights on, and please vote. That passes unanimously.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President, you don't have a motion?
Oh, I'm sure.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Now let's vote. That's still passing unanimously. Thank you. Okay, there was no meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency, but, Mr. Chairman, do you have anything to say?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, ordinance first reading.
Item 14A is proposed ordinance number 05-12, an ordinance to be entitled, and ordinance amending section 7-4-14 of the Code of the City of Pensacola, Florida, providing for civil citations and fines for enforcement of open container violations, providing for severability, repealing clause, providing an effective date.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Ms. Myers.
Pardon, Ms. Myers.
Oh.
Okay.
Did it, did it work?
Please re-vote.
Yeah, re-vote, please. That passes unanimously. Okay, ordinance is second reading, item 15A.
Item 15A is proposed ordinance number 03-12, an ordinance to be entitled, and ordinance closing, abandoning, and vacating a portion of the Leon Street right-of-way in Pensacola, Escambia County, state of Florida, repealing clause and providing an effective date.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Please vote. There you go. That passes unanimously. 15B.
Item 15B is proposed ordinance number 04-12, an ordinance to be entitled, and ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain property pursuant to and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of Pensacola, amending the zoning map of the city of Pensacola, repealing clause and effective date.
Your pleasure. Move for approval. Second. Motion and second. Discussion. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Resolutions.
Item 16A is resolution number 03-12, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing and making revisions and appropriations for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2012, providing for an effective date.
Move to approve? Second. Discussion. Please vote. That passes unanimously. 16B.
Item 16B is resolution number 04-12, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing and making revisions and appropriations for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2012, providing for an effective date.
Move to approve? Second. Motion and second. Discussion. Please vote. That passes unanimously. 16C.
Item 16C is resolution number 05-12, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pensacola, Florida, urging members of the Florida Legislature to support the adoption of Senate Bill 206.
Move to approve? Second. Motion and second. Discussion. Take none, please vote. Finished business. New business. Oh, Ms. Myers, I'm sorry. Ms. Myers.
I wasn't very quick. I just wanted to update the council on the Environmental Advisory Board. They did meet Wednesday and had a very good meeting. And I just wanted to recognize Rebecca Hare, who is out in the audience, for her persistence coming down to the council and bringing the issue of the Environmental Advisory Board to, to the council, and her willingness to serve and go beyond just being on the board, but actually offering her services even if she were not elected to be on the board, on the Environmental Advisory Board. And I think, I want to thank everyone who's serving on the Environmental Advisory Board, and I'm very pleased that they are meeting again, and they did discuss, Councilman Johnson, your issue regarding the impervious surface that you would like to see addressed at Bayview Park. So that, that's one of the issues they will be looking at, but I'm just very pleased that, that this group, that this board is meeting again.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to tack on that I did also get a report, and, and thank you, ma'am, for your service on the EAB, but I'd like to report that the issue that I had was, I was hoping that we would get some recommendations from the EAB on how to reduce impervious surfaces there at Bayview Park, in particular, the boat ramp parking there. I think, from what I understand, from, from reports that I had gotten, that the, the discussion actually got kind of sidetracked and started talking about the master plan of Bayview Park, and, and, and that's, and that's fine, but I'm just really hoping, if anyone from the EAB is listening, that I was hoping that they would bring recommendations back to this city council for, for suggestions on how to reduce hard surfaces there, impervious surface there at Bayview Park. I, you know, look at the boat ramp and the boat ramp parking every day of my life, and to see no cars or three cars at the, that boat parking, parking lot, you know, heavily used on two or three weekends a year, but to see just that hard surface down, down there at Bayview Park, knowing that that's not the highest and best use for waterfront property, it, it just, I just hope that the EAB will get the message that I'm looking for recommendations, and I think that they really need to look at the use of that parking lot, and is that the highest and best use? Is that, is that best what's for water quality in Bay to Har when we have storm, storms and the water hits that parking lot and washes directly into the bayou with no treatment, with no retention pond or no, no water treatment, no stormwater treatment? I just, I just can't, I hate to go on and on about it, but I think that this, that the conversation got kind of sidetracked, and I'm hoping that it can be redirected for recommendations of this city council on how to reduce impervious surfaces there at Bayview Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeWes, was yours for new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more old business? New business? Ms. DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I trust you will help with this discussion. It's item number five from the mayor's requests on the agenda for the Cal meeting on Monday, their proposed park and facilities naming and renaming guidelines. Since there was not a motion and a second, it essentially died in committee, but I'd like to have further discussion on that as a council. And I, I don't know if we can have discussion, or if I have to bring up a motion for reconsideration and get a second at this point, or I'll yield to you for instruction on how we should do that, or if I can ask questions of staff.
Yeah, feel free to ask questions, and, and whether it's reconsideration, we're not in committee now, so I think it would work as a, as a new motion.
As new, okay.
New motion, and certainly would entertain that, and we could get that up for discussion again.
Okay.
I, I agree that it, it needs to be discussed, but apparently people had problems with what was presented to us.
And it caught me off guard that it didn't get a motion and a second, and it was gone before I could say anything, but, you know, in, in reading over it and trying to, I'll explain to the citizens that are here tonight and watching, the current guidelines that we have for naming a city facility is any proposal for the naming of public facilities will be presented to the city council for council action. In our former charter, the, as, the, the city manager, I think, could make recommendations, or staff through the city manager could make recommendations, and that now with our new executive and legislative, legislative branch, it puts staff in a precarious situation to make a recommendation through the mayor's office and then ask for council action without more instruction, basically more policy in place from council. And I believe that that's what was trying to be accomplished here, and it says, over the past two years, the Parks and Rec Board has been approached by several community organizations requesting to rename an existing city park. The board currently has two requests pending, a request for the Woodland Heights Neighborhood Association to rename Woodland Heights Park, and a citizen request to rename Exchange Park. In addition, the city is building two new community centers, which the city council may wish to officially name as well. So the Parks and Rec Board brought this forward, and I think it warrants further discussion and action by council, and I think the, the policies and processes that were recommended, you know, addressed all the issues that may arise, so I would like for us to take action on it. And I didn't know if there could be any further clarification from staff to add on to my comments as far as, you know, what issues they were trying to address.
Well, one thing I'd, I'd invite council to do is whether they work with staff between now and the next time this topic comes up in committee, or they just bring something to the floor if we were to reconsider this, is, you know, some language that would make it acceptable for them. I'd prefer that they'd work through the mayor's staff ahead of time, you know, to, to get it right before we do vote on it, but we could even tweak it later. Mr. Asmar, do you have anything to add to that?
Mr. President, honorable members of the council, Dave Flaherty's here. If, if you have some questions, we certainly can address that, but we could answer your questions. You have the mayor's recommendation, and we certainly can, can work through any issues, but if you prefer to work through committee system, that's fine with us too as well.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and make that motion, then, Ms. DeWes?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider item number five from the, or should I call it that because it died in committee? Which would you rather for the record? I can just bring up the subject.
Yeah, just, yeah.
I make a motion to reconsider their proposed park and facilities naming or renaming guidelines.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Got four people that I presume would like to speak to that. Going to go in this order. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and I had some concerns about what was presented Monday, and that is, a city council person, and, and we all know that my intent is to have the tennis courts named after the tennis courts named after Vice President Townsend, that he has fought for so diligently over the past three years, but one thing that concerned me was, what was presented was that you can't be a city councilman, and that you, after your term expires, that it would take four years before you could be considered for that naming opportunity. Well, I know Mr. Townsend is a lot younger than me, but if he fulfills this term, that would be a year, and then when he's reelected, if he so chooses to run again, that would be another four years, so that makes it five years, and it would be four years after that for that consideration to rename those, or to name those tennis courts after Mr. Townsend. That makes it nine years. And, you know, I just think that that's just way too long to do that, and if this moves forward, I plan on making a motion to go ahead and name those courts prior, if it looks like this, as it's been written now, this renaming policy, if it looks like it's going to move forward, then I'd like to make a motion prior to that to rename those tennis courts before those particular policies go into effect and name those tennis courts after Mr. Townsend. I just, I just think that that's just too long, and I just can't go along with that and will not support it if it comes back as it was written, which brings me to the question, is that what we're supporting now, Mr. President, is what was presented Monday? Are we just going to take a whole look at it again, kind of reshuffle the deck? Is that?
Well, yes. The motion stands on its own, but between now and the next committee meeting, you could work with the mayor's staff, work with Mr. Flaherty, or just come up with something altogether on your own, and we can make adjustments to it at the committee meeting itself.
Right. Okay. Well, I think I've made my thoughts public, and I hope that Mr. Asmar, the mayor's office, and Mr. Flaherty have heard those comments. Thank you.
All right. It'll be Mr. Townsend, Mr. Geraldson, Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Johnson, for extending my life. I really appreciate that.
Your political life, too.
I'm amazed that I'm part of the discussion, and, you know, I appreciate that. I, prior to the meeting Monday, had intended to be here, little did I know that the issue of naming something was coming up. I had some issues regarding the duration or the tenure that it would take to identify someone, an elected official. I thought it was excessive. Now it appears that if I speak up against that, that I got some personal interest, and honestly, if I need to take a Boy Scout, oh, I will do that if I could remember it. But I think the four years are excessive. I don't know what would be the right amount of time to have between a person leaving and being named, but I have some issue with that. I can't support the motion in terms of voting for it now and then going back and speaking to the staff, and if you have any kind of issues that you want to amend it, I just think the logical thing to do would be to look at it, and there are some issues that folks have, speak to staff, and then come back with the next committee as a whole, rather than voting on it here. I just have some issues with that. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Mr. Geraldson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and as I indicated on Monday, that I could support, well, as Mr. Johnson and Mr. Townsend restated, the length of time, and I indicated on Monday, I can support naming the tennis courts after Mr. Townsend if we name the resource center that's coming in District Five after me. That would be the fair thing to do. And I'm wondering, why are we changing, or looking to change, is it just based on the new charter? And why don't we name streets or facilities or buildings, what have you, after living persons, when there is a name downtown who is still a living person in a local street that we have not changed? So we do, in fact, name buildings and whatnot after living people. Mr. Hunter, Cecil Hunter, who was a member of this council for a number of years, has Cecil T. Hunter, who named after him. And I don't understand why we would want to change it. I don't know, maybe if it comes back at, as a presentation, we could see what's wrong with the present policy and what we need to do to fix it, but I personally see nothing wrong with naming buildings, streets, or what have you after living people. You know, it's great after you're dead and somebody says, "Oh, yeah, he did thus and so." Big deal. Let's give people their flowers while they're alive. Let's not play around and say, "Well, we'll wait until you die before we name it," and everybody knows, but you won't know, because you'll be six feet under. But if we are willing to modify the policy and change it, then I will not support the present language of what's before us if we are reconsidering that, but I certainly will make a motion, or a substitute motion, or an amendment to the motion, to name that facility after John Gerald, who's been working on it for the past six years. Thank you.
I just had our parliamentarian inform me that we actually need to vote on the issue of reconsideration before we discuss it, so please vote.
We're voting for reconsider.
Okay. And that passes seven-two. Okay. And that, does that complete?
Motion. Do you need me to make a motion now to discuss?
Please.
Okay. And, counsel, I'm reading from item number five from the mayor's agenda, and the recommendation that I'm making the motion based on is that city council approve the proposed naming and renaming guidelines, with exception of the four years out of office requirement developed by the Neighborhood Services Department and, once approved by council, to be adopted by the Parks and Recreation Board. And that's my motion.
Okay. That's the motion.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, and we still have discussion. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've voted to reconsider it tonight, or to have it so that we could discuss it. I think cleaner it would be to just have it on our next agenda as a discussion item, because personally, I, since it didn't come forward, I said, "Wow, we're going to have to do it again," or, you know, and so I don't really remember the details of what was proposed, but I, nothing against those whom are being considered as named sources, but I'm reminded regularly of a street in our city that is named after someone who it was named after when they're alive, and many people come up to me and say, "Can we change the name of the street from the name of a crook?" And so that is always a question that comes up with many people that I know that see that street often, and so I think that naming facilities after living people is an interesting challenge, but, so, I won't be supporting approving it tonight simply because I don't remember the details of the proposal, but, and I'm not trying to cast aspersions at those who are, who people are hoping to try to name things after, it's just that we do run into that risk when we name them after someone who has a chance of screwing up later. Thank you.
Okay. And, Ms. DeWes, I just want to be clear on what your intent was. My understanding is you wanted this to come back to the committee next time, not to pass this tonight.
Actually, I think, in hearing from counsel, I don't know if I've heard, we've discussed everyone's issues, but that the main issue was the four years out of office, and that was my concern as well. I didn't understand that, so in removing that, I felt like the recommendations that were brought forward were, you know, worthy of us making a decision on at this point, so I'm actually bringing up as new business to be acted upon tonight.
Okay. I've got you. All right. And because you did make the motion, you can respond after each of the individuals that speak, and I've got Ms. Myers up next.
Well, I'm not going to support the motion because, well, I wasn't expecting this issue to come up tonight, and I can't remember the details either, but I will be happy to reconsider it at the committee of the whole, have it placed on the committee of the whole agenda, so that I will have an opportunity to refresh my memory regarding the details. So that's my position.
And I would like to, after everybody's had a chance to speak, invite the maker of the motion to maybe modify the motion accordingly. Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would hope when we are discussing this that we'd be able mindful that we're not voting for Ron Townsend or either John Gerald to be named something after. It's so unfortunate that John has put the caveat, "If you name me, you got to name me." That seems a little unusual also, and hopefully I won't go to prison where you have, if possibly something is named after me, that you have to scrape it off the wall, as Councilman Pratt is suggesting. I just think we need to look at this again and make a determination that we really want to do something like this, and in fact, not haphazardly name anything after anybody if they have not served this city and this community in a real responsible manner, and that would be my thoughts about this, and I think that folks who haven't mentioned have served, and it should be based on that merit and not on whether another person is being named. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. DeWes, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, there are more lives.
Mr. Geraldson.
Yes, and if we're in the process of naming things, let's go ahead and name them and get it over with, anything that's available to be named, but I won't be able to support the current language in the motion that is before us this evening, because it's occurring to me as I listen to council articulate their concerns, and it takes us back to Mr. Sansing's original comments, and that is, "When are you going to get staff?" That would be a task for staff, because it's kind of getting confusing. Why is staff, Parks and Recreation, sending a recommendation to us to consider as to how we want to do something? And then I'm hearing all of these comments going up and down this dais, saying, "Well, I'd like to do it this way." Then it ought to become incumbent and the responsibility of the council to develop what we want in the procedure to begin with. We should have the ultimate responsibility of developing that versus taking what's been sent to us for consideration when there are numerous opinions as to how it ought to be done. So under those circumstances, I won't be able to support approval of what had been presented to us before, but that we get it back on the committee of the whole and then have a discussion and make some decisions.
Thank you.
And cut the restrictions out.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I'll make this quick, and I hope we can bring this in for a landing here soon. I won't be supporting the motion either, and I just think this thing needs to be looked at. I think that we need to take a hard look at it, have another discussion about it at our next committee of the whole or the one after. You know, I have some problems with it. I can't remember all the particulars about it, and to vote on it as it was written, with taking out the four-year-after-you've-served issue, I'm just not prepared to vote on it and accept it tonight, and I do think, I think that there is some value in recognizing people while they're alive, and people that have served our community and have given themselves to this community, I think there's value there. To have someone recognized while they're alive, I think is important at times. I've seen it happen often. Sometimes, you know, you strike out, and, you know, it doesn't work out like you wanted it to, but I think that's infrequent. I think that that doesn't happen often, but I'm not going to support the motion. I'd like to see staff bring this back, something that's a little bit more easy to swallow. Thank you.
Ms. DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm glad we had this discussion tonight. I know that we're also able to follow the sunshine rule and don't have an opportunity to talk to each other, and that's why we really probably should have had this conversation on Monday, and like I said, I was caught off guard. And I know that the four-year out of office was a concern, and I haven't heard other concerns directly to the wording or what each individual council member, and hopefully they can get with the mayor and forward their concerns to staff and have this brought back. Otherwise, it would just be if I make this motion tonight that we reconsider or ask that it be brought back on the next agenda. My concern is that, you know, that has to be tomorrow afternoon, and then it's published next Tuesday if there's any concerns by council members, because there is a request pending that is rather urgent, and really, quite honestly, that request is not affected either way, so I'm not saying move this through because of it, but I think we really need something in place as a council to give direction to staff so they're not put in the position that they're being put in at this point. So I will amend the motion that I've made for, and as stated, that that be put on the agenda in that manner for our next council meeting, and then if there's any further requests, I guess they can, a friendly amendment on the next committee of the whole meeting. Would that work out?
That sounds good to me. Yeah, and the person that seconded is?
I agree.
Okay.
Great. I think discussion's over. Public?
Just for me.
Please vote.
Ms. Myers.
Ms. Myers.
Ms. Myers.
Okay.
I got to revoke.
Okay. Mr. Johnson stepped out.
Clear it.
Do you want to revoke?
Okay. Revoke, please.
Thanks. Dr. Wu.
Dr. Wu. Okay. That passes unanimously. Mr. Johnson's absent for the vote. Any more new business? Thank you. Okay, that moves us to open floor. Do you have any cards, Madam Clark?
That's a first.
Well, there's nothing else before council? We're adjourned. Thank you.